We're going to open the public hearing. Public input. Public input shall be limited to statements from the public relating to any issues with the jurisdiction of the Chelmsford Zoning Board of Appeals that are not currently the subject of a pending public hearing before the zoning board of appeals. Public comment may be made on any pending public hearings shall only be heard during such public hearings and shall be limited to three minutes' time. Then a request for public input at this time? Seeing none. We have a new public hearing. Before we hop into that, I just want to make sure anyone that is here understands that we're going to have a continuation of Rose Avenue, Cobblestone Five LLC, and Ledge Road, owner Ledge Road Realty Holdings and Newport Aggregates LLC will be continued both till January 2nd without any comment or testimony. Our first new public hearing is 61 Smith Street, Thong Kue Hoang and Linda Lee requesting a variance under zoning bylaw section 195-9 conformity for construction of a 28-by-24 square foot residential addition which does not meet the side setback requirement of 25 feet and other relief deemed necessary. This property is located in the residential RB district, assessors parcel ID map 32, block 122. It consists of approximately 1.06 acres. Someone here tonight for 61 Smith Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Attorney Pete Nikosia from Tinsborough, coming out to visit for a different night. I represent Linda Lee and her son Thomas Wong, who own 61 Smith Street as their primary residence. This is a mother and son. They're looking to put on a two-car garage addition with, you know, some living space above it. If you look at the certified plot plan that was presented, we have a fair amount of environmental challenges on the site. You know, we've got areas of the no disturb, no impervious, and the riverfront, all that affect our developable envelope, makes it a very limited developable envelope on the site. Those would be the hardships owing specifically to the lot under the statute that would qualify for the variance. So what we're looking for is a singular variance for a side yard setback. Supposed to have 25 feet. We're providing 16, so we're looking for a nine-foot variance from the side yard setback. Other than that, the project and the property complies with all the table of dimensional requirements in the zone. So originally, we had some different, you know, versions of the construction plan, so I had involved Building Commissioner Negron very early in the process, and he and I went back and forth a couple of times on the plans to take it out of the category of a limited accessory use apartment. So the way that we resolve that issue is it's an open entranceway between the existence of the main dwelling and the new dwelling. There is certainly separate, you know, access to get into the garage, but in terms of open access between the two units, it's going to remain open. So once we removed, you know, the doorway, Commissioner Negron had indicated that it's just going to be viewed as an addition and not require the need for a special permit for an LAA. So it's really not more elaborate than that. I think the construction plans are pretty self-explanatory, as is the plot plan. We will have to seek some conservation approvals as well, but we wanted to come here for us before we do that.
We have not approached them yet.
No, we're going to do that next. So we're prepared to do that. We flagged everything, so. So with that, happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Glenn?
Can you describe the additional living space of the garage?
There's a sheet here, Glenn, on the back of it is the plan.
So there's a floor plan and the construction set, so there's bedroom, bathroom, there is a kitchenette area. Again, this is mother and son. The son advances in years and, you know, is establishing his own life, and mom is advancing in years. I think they're trying to at least create some level of privacy for the two of them without crossing the line into an in-law apartment. So sort of just more of a getaway space for mom is really the intent behind it, so.
So mom's going to move into the new space and son's taking over the house, or?
He's in the house right now. I mean, they're both live there right now. It's just giving mom and son more space than what they currently enjoy right now. I think they have, as mom had explained it to me originally, they both have different cooking desires and cooking habits, and she wants to be able to exercise those without interference from her son. No offense, Thomas, but I think that was actually the primary motivating factor originally.
Glenn, I didn't mean to step in front of you. I just didn't know if you'd seen it. Do you have other questions?
No, I just thought we should mention what that living, he just mentioned it broadly as living space. I thought we should have in record of what it's going to be.
Yep. Are there any further questions from the board?
I took a ride by there, and if there's one lot that needs a variance, it's this lot because the shape and the topography is like hilly as can be.
It's a challenge, yeah.
I was so amazed. And I think my friend built that, Walter Lewis, many, many years ago.
They had to go through a few versions of the site plan, but ultimately, this is what worked.
Yep. Fair enough.
Any other questions? I think I'll read the letters in if that seems like a good time to do that. Zoning Board of Appeals regarding 61 Smith Street, this office finds the following. The proposed addition existing structure must be brought up to the current code 780 CMR for smoke, carbon monoxide, heat detectors, type, locations, and power source. The applicant is advised to submit a plan to the fire prevention office for review and approval prior to the issuance of a building permit. This office would approve this plan with these conditions, and I ask that the board make this letter part of their approval process and public record. Sincerely, Josh Abbott, Captain, Fire Prevention Office.
We'd start, we'll stipulate to those upgrades, of course.
Excellent. I don't think it's optional.
No, it's not, but I, you know.
From Sheila Joyce, project engineer, 61 Smith Street. This office has reviewed the project application plans and documents submitted to the DPW on November 18th, 2024 for the following public hearing notice on December 5th, 2024. As a result of this review, the office has the following comments. No increase to the town of Chelmsford sewer infrastructure shall be more than 500 gallons per day per CMR 15 Title V. Sewerage flow per bedroom of a dwelling is estimated equal to 110 gallons per day. So that would be well under the qualifier. The proposed addition is flow is acceptable as of November 26, 2024. The DPW shall mentor and monitor enforced sewer flow limitations and impose penalties for violations thereof in accordance with the town sewer policy. Per the Town of Chelmsford Sewer Use Regulations, the City Commission established the estimated cost of increasing the treatment facility capacity to the system to be $15 per gallon of daily wastewater flow. To be 15 per gallon of daily wastewater flow. The sewer impact fee is $15 per gallon, times 110 gallons per day would be $1,650. This shall be paid to the DPW sewer prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. If there is a change in use or expansion, the applicant should submit the necessary flare pans to supplement the sewer allocation calculations. Erosion-controlled dressers must retain the sediment on site. These must be installed prior to any work or demolition. The applicant should follow protocols and obtain necessary approvals from the conservation agent as project is proposed in an environmentally sensitive area. Three, consideration should be made to install roof drain drywells or the equivalent to infiltrate roof runoff. This is not a requirement for approval. That was engineering. The Board of Health has no concerns at 61 Smith Street, and the police have no concerns at 61 Smith Street. That is the extent of my letters. Going to open this up to the audience. If anyone would like to speak in favor or opposition to this, now is the time. Seeing none, going to entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Can I ask one more question?
Absolutely, sir.
Are you or your client aware of the new ADU laws that are being imposed by the state?
Yes.
Okay.
Doesn't go into effect until February 2nd.
Right.
And I know most towns are still grappling with what their special permit bylaw is going to look like, but I'm aware of what the state limitations are. So to the extent that this, wherever to be converted to, you know, an in-law apartment, you know, we would have to make some modifications to comply with that.
Well, the state is, we're still waiting for the state to flesh out their broad stroke at this point.
They're supposed to be giving you some model special permit regulations that you can use, but.
The only thing that would bother me or concern me is if the addition were approved as an ADU under the new guidelines, but again, it's still up in the air. The applicant could legally rent this space at any point in the future, and I don't think they could do that.
I don't believe it would be compliant. So with what the ADU proposes right now under the state statute, the limitations on dimensions would be problematic for this addition. We would have to come back and retrofit that to be able to comply with the statute. So we're not going to be able to do that just as a matter of right by grant of this variance. So I don't think that's a concern.
Okay.
I'd also point out that every single home in town is under the same, they could choose to do this if you have a home.
Well, I just thought that the owner should be aware of his options going forward.
Fair enough. Any further questions? I think there was a motion.
My name.
To close the public hearing.
Close the public hearing.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any of us opposed? We don't easily grant variances. In this case, I think that you have a very strong argument to two of the three tenants anyways, the soil condition and the topography of the site itself or the lot shape. So I don't know if anyone else has other concerns about this or wants to voice them.
On that note.
Go ahead, Jimmy.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance request for 61 Smith Street under section 195-5 with including all letters read in.
Second by Peter. All in favor? Seeing none? No deuces?
Good luck with it.
Yes, we appreciate your consideration, and I hope you all have a happy holiday.
That's a record, isn't it?
I think that's the first one.
Do you want these back?
This is, this is why you have.
Just trying to be polite.
Thank you.
There's nothing, it's a crazy lot.
Our second hearing is 150 North Road. It is an administrative appeal requested by Michael, I'm going to say this wrong, I apologize, Goia, 147 North Road, under the zoning bylaw section 195-102B3 regarding a planning board approval for the site plan review and a special permit for the construction of a 16,200-square-foot childcare center at 150 North Road. Good evening.
Good evening. It's pronounced Joya.
I can have your neighborhood address for the record?
Joya.
Joya, is that right? I'm sorry, I knew I was going to get it wrong.
It's no problem.
Maybe tell us a little bit about what is going on there.
So I own and reside at 147 North Road, which is directly across the street from I know I covered a lot in the narrative, and the letter that was just passed out was in response to a letter that the attorney sent out yesterday. If I had more time, I probably would have been able to get it to you a little sooner. Kind of my first time being up here on my own, so I'm not.
Take your time, yeah.
I'm not sure where I should, where I should really go or.
I guess, what is the reason for your appeal of the planning board decision?
So my big reason for it is I believe that the structure as proposed is unreasonable, which would fit into the town's ability to regulate under the Dover Amendment. The planning board was more or less unanimously against this project, but they felt compelled to vote for it because of the Dover Amendment and because of the specific advice from council, which upon, after approval and reaching out to other attorneys, I found that it might not have been the correct advice. They weren't able to give me an example or confirm that the part of the law where you're able to regulate the bulk of a structure is tied directly to the plot of land that's available, which was the reasoning for approving it as it was proposed, was they, it was believed that you cannot regulate the size of the building as long as it met the setbacks. I was unable to confirm that type of information, and I did consult with an attorney who had handled Dover Amendment cases specifically, and they weren't able to confirm that those two things were directly linked, which was the big reason why it was approved. If that case wasn't made to the planning board, I don't believe they would have passed it as proposed.
Okay. What I'm going to do is ask Mr. Ikman to speak on this to the knowledge that he has, because I really don't have, I don't even have a good background on how this came. I know the gist of it, but legally, I guess I'd ask for your opinion on his statements.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is this getting to the mic? I'm not sure how close I should be to this thing.
I was really loud.
It picks up pretty well.
That's fine. Okay. Thank you. So the planning board did accept the fact that this use is a protected use under the so-called Dover Amendment. That's a section of the State Zoning Act, section 3 of chapter 40. It's a childcare facility, and what that statute says is that the town may not restrict by special permit, but may impose reasonable regulations related to certain dimensional characteristics, including bulk, setback, lot coverage. The planning board, seeing that, applied the site plan criteria the applicant had applied for site plan. The board applied their criteria, understanding that the use was allowed by right. They determined that the project as proposed met all the dimensional criteria in the zoning bylaw that would apply to a use on the property except for parking. The board decided that the parking that was proposed, even though it did not meet their requirement, was sufficient, and the planning board does have authority to do that under the Dover Amendment. It can decide when those regulations are.
Is there a waiver for that? Is that the process?
They did not explicitly do that, but I think implicitly that's what they did. They do, the town has authority to decide when a regulation is not reasonable as applied to a Dover use, and I think they did that here. So given that, they approved the project. There was resistance to the facility in the neighborhood. There was some resistance to the size of the facility. The difficulty with that for the planning board, and I think for anyone considering an appeal, is that the use is allowed by right. It has to be allowed by right, so considerations of whether the size of the use is appropriate for the town, whether it's appropriate for the area, those are considerations of use. Since the use has to be allowed by right, it's not something that the board can consider.
It really cannot be a factor.
Correct. Right. So my understanding here is that there's a suggestion that the project is too big. The difficulty for the planning board was that it complied with all the dimensional requirements.
Setbacks more met?
Correct.
Do you, do you know the parking, like, was, were they asking for 100 and they got 80 or?
My memory is.
I believe that the standard called for 80 or 85. They were asking for 50, and Chris pushed for 57, and they increased to 57 spots.
Right, and I believe that's, that's my memory as well, and I believe that's represented in their decision. You'll see that in the facts, so you can see what the requirements were there. There was, in fact, I believe the applicant is here and can address this with their attorney as necessary, but I believe they presented evidence to the board of why that was appropriate. So I think your question as to the petitioner here is what is the basis? Your appeal is a good one, because I think that's important. The board obviously is going to consider why the appeal might be inadequate or the decision might be inadequate. They're not going to look at the entire appeal and try to redo it. That's really the planning board's job.
Correct.
Question is, what are we doing here and what can the board look at?
What is the right, what is the actual right that they have, the Dover that you're referencing to?
Right.
And, you know, not without, I know it's long, I've kind of looked into it a little bit.
It's not that long. I will actually, it's a short paragraph. Oh, okay. Yeah, I can actually, so what it says is, "No zoning ordinance or bylaw in any city or town shall prohibit or require a special permit for the use of land or structures or the expansion of structures for the primary accessory or incidental purpose of operating a childcare facility." Provided, however, and I think this is what the appeal is about, that such land or structures may be subject to reasonable regulations concerning the bulk and height of structures and determining yard sizes, lot area, setbacks, open space, parking, and building coverage requirements. So that's the limitation that the town has as far as applying its regulations. So as I said, what the planning board did is it looked at those regulations through site plan review and said, do they comply? And the answer to that in every question was yes, except for parking. And in that case, the evidence was presented by the applicant that they had provided sufficient parking, and the board made a determination, although they didn't reference this specifically, that that parking was adequate.
Difficult spot.
Right.
Danny?
Also, isn't it under site plan review, you can't deny the site plan approval unless there's a lack of information or safety concern?
That's absolutely correct.
I'm guessing they went through the fire department, the police department with their approval process as well?
Right, and I know Evan has referenced that information, but yeah, they did get comments from the boards, the town boards and departments.
And they did the A and R prior to submitting further approval for the building plan to get the three blocks merged.
I believe so, right.
So they had the land coverage.
Right, I believe so, and I believe that would have been allowed by right.
How does this fall to the CPA jurisdiction?
This gentleman is appealing a decision of the planning board.
Right.
Much to when Jose will make a decision and someone will question it, we are the arbitrator of that. We would be the arbitrator of the planning board.
Gotcha.
Our vote could overturn that, but it would, I mean, it would have to be, it doesn't fit on the law, it doesn't meet the town zoning requirements. If I understand that correctly, all, they've met them all. They're not asking for a special permit or a variance or any protection whatsoever.
Right.
There's their table.
They have fitted on the site correctly.
Again, going back to fits within the bylaws, why is it here? I realize, we're the arbiter.
You have a right to appeal any decision to a point, and he's exercising his right.
It's our job to be the analysis if we have the ability to appeal, approve his request. So that's what we're doing.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to clear this up, I know the board doesn't see this very often, appeals from site plan approvals. So the Chelmsford bylaw does not allow direct appeal of those approvals to this board. So what has to happen here is that once the approval, the approval, site plan approval is a prerequisite to a building permit. Once site plan approval is issued, then the applicant can apply for a building permit. Once that permit is issued based on site plan approval, that permit can be appealed to this board. That's the standard, how you see all your appeals. When a building inspector acts on a permit or takes enforcement action, that can be appealed to this board. That's what happened here. Foundation permit was issued, the applicant, the petitioner had filed an appeal of site plan approval. Once that happens, the board can take that up.
Yes, Danny?
Question for the petitioner.
Yes.
So when you reference the bulk, and what do you specifically mean by the bulk of it?
I mean the building footprint, the 16,000-square-foot footprint. The Gardner School operates multiple locations that are smaller. In addition to the multiple locations that they operate that are smaller, there are multiple locations within less than a mile of the proposed site that are smaller as well, which is why I believe that the 16,000-square-foot proposal is unreasonable, especially in the location that they chose. In a different location, it might not be as unreasonable, but where it is, where on North Road it is, it's, you know, it's like putting a mega mall in the middle of a North Road. It's a lot. You know, I think they'll, is it the learning center on Chelmsford Street? They're 10,000 square foot. That's probably the best comparable even with Primrose down the street, you know, right on the middle of Chelmsford Street, right around all the houses. That's the best comparable in the neighborhood where, you know, they operate a successful facility, and, you know, I feel as if their bulk is not unreasonable, given what the project is for a childcare facility nowadays.
Do we know how many floors this is?
Just one.
Just one. Oh, just one.
It's a big building.
It's a question of a town council. There seem to be some question of whether or not the speaker has standing on this issue. What constitutes standing? Is there a definition exactly of what that means?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, there is. Essentially, it's an injury or deprivation of a legal right that the zoning bylaw provides. So if the zoning bylaw protects a certain interest, for instance, views sometimes can be standing. If the zoning bylaw expressly protects views, anything that will affect the actual use of the petitioner's property, inadequate drainage congestion, if the zoning bylaw directly protects those in terms of site plan approval, and the board issues approval, an applicant who feels that they have been harmed in their property by this approval would have standing. So challenge here is that the applicant, he's correct, or the petitioner is correct, he does have a presumption of standing because he is across the street. So if you wanted to challenge standing, you would have to bring forth evidence that, notwithstanding that, he did not suffer any actual injury. That hasn't been addressed by the board to this point. It's been raised as an issue, but they haven't discussed it.
Thank you.
Danny?
I guess the next question is, what is the harm?
I think that's a question over there.
Well, I am given the right of presumption of legal standing. Beyond that, I would say that, you know, you could look at the harm as a reduction in my property value aesthetically, and those probably are the two biggest ones. Value of my property would give me base standing in a court of law, technically. I believe that could be confirmed, but beyond the presumption, that would be my next base standing. I would need to consult with my own attorney to give you more of a written, you know, detailed type of injury layout, but.
Yes, outside of being, outside of it being, it's an RB district, and obviously, this is not residential building. That's why they went to the planning board. Everything else is by right, because they comply with all of our regulations, correct?
I think that's also by right.
That's pyramidal.
It is.
Because of Dover?
Yes.
Yeah, 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 okay.
It's still, I hate to say this, but by way of argument, if you sold your house to a family with children, it would increase the value.
That could be argued. You know, North Road itself, it definitely has its own safety concerns.
Oh, definitely.
I'm not sure how many of you are on Chelmsford News, but I've actually posted it twice since they approved that meeting. One was a kid almost getting hit crossing the road trying to get to school in the morning. And the next one was the mailman getting sideswiped in front of my house. So there's definitely safety issues in regards to North Road, and I don't feel as if another 800 transactions a day is going to help anything.
Yeah.
I can't vision 150 North Road. Do we have an image of the neighborhood?
It's, you know, that, you know, the White House on the hill, if you're driving towards the center.
There's several White Houses.
The Llewellyn's.
The Llewellyn's house.
Do you know where Wigan Street is? Do you know where Wigan Street is? Charles.
You know the Llewellyn.
It's right across the street from Wigan.
It's right next, it's right up the street from the Llewellyn's house, the Llewellyn's house. You can't see, it's all, it looks all wooded. The house that's on that property. The house that's on that property is kind of rundown, and it's almost surrounded by trees. You can't really see it anymore.
Demolishing the existing house?
Yep.
Okay.
And it's kind of, it's kind of hilly. It almost looks like a woodland area at this point. I wouldn't have known.
Looks like it's going pretty far back from the road.
It does.
The new property, the new build won't.
Yeah, so what's highlighted there?
Yeah, that's going to be what's already there.
It's taking up, the one that's highlighted, the one below it, and the one behind it, up to the right of it.
Yeah, because they've merged three lots. They merged three lots.
Oh, okay.
So they merged those three lots, and they're going to consume 20% with the building and parking lot.
Okay, I know where you are.
It would seem, not saying it's go to bed, but it would seem to make that area of Chelmsford the childcare center.
Center of the world, you know.
It's turning into.
I mean, we're in a challenging position. I think that we would have to find a mistake that the planning board made, or a decision that was not acceptable to overturn their decision. So I don't know that we.
Because the public safety aspect is not something to really be.
That's correct, yes. Because you're restricted by certain considerations that Dover Amendment allows the town to impose, those areas are the only areas that the town can impose reasonable regulations.
The idea of it being safe or unsafe is not something we can consider.
No, not unless that arises out of bulk, lot size, frontage, et cetera, and since they comply with those, it would not arise.
Now I know where you are.
Yeah. I mean, you really can't even see, you can't even see the house walls from those, unless you really look.
Yeah, but we don't know what they're going to make. But that's not our call.
What do you mean?
We don't know if those trees are going to stay there.
They won't.
I'm because I said it's not our call.
I've seen their plans.
Have you?
Those trees are coming down the wall.
You should take a tour.
Yeah, the trees, the walls, they're going to clear all that out. You'll see the building from the street. You have the parking lot.
I think at this time, if there's no further questions, I'm going to open it up. Do we need to do that on an appeal? I think it will anyways.
Public hearing.
So if someone would like to speak in favor or opposition to this, if you gentlemen would like a little time to explain your position, we'd be glad to hear it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm Bill Proia. I'm an attorney for Viking, which is the Gardner School. So just a couple of things. It's not just the Dover Amendment here, and I know people get hung up on that, and it's, you know, it is difficult for municipalities and neighbors sometimes to accept that. But the other thing to remember is, it is a byright use under the bylaw as well. So it's not just the Dover Amendment. So the town made the decision to make it a byright use in all the districts of the town, and that's in the use table. So that's one thing just to, I like to just remind everyone about.
As well as the state, the town has already decided this is acceptable.
Yeah, so that's one thing. And the other thing is, the town also can adopt regulations, dimensional regulations that would apply to this use just like any other use. But the town has chosen to let the underlying zoning dimensions apply, and that's the discussion that's happened here, that there's compliance, that the project complies with those. So that's just another, another way to see this. You know, some, some communities have adopted regulations more specific to the childcare use, and then that creates a different discussion, but Chelmsford has not decided to do that. So we're all sort of working under those circumstances.
We could have larger setbacks or more restrictive space for it if that had gone through the town meeting and been approved as a zoning law.
Correct.
But we didn't.
Didn't. And this is kind of not the forum where you can, in effect, adopt new dimensional standards.
It's quite a process, I understand.
Yeah. The other thing is, there was a, I think, a mention of another center nearby, and according to the town's assessment, it's almost identical in size. This is 16,200 square feet.
Is this the Montessori?
Primrose.
Primrose, yes.
Oh, Primrose, okay.
And.
On Parkhurst.
The corner of Parkhurst and North.
I have the assessor's card here, just, I just wanted to check it out, and it's 16,102. So this project is 98 square feet larger than that.
Yep.
And just for comparison, that parking permitted there was 47 spaces, and this is 57. And the site plan review also included peer review. So the town had a traffic engineer that represented the town and analyzed our traffic study as well.
The effect that it would have.
For the use, because, and there's a lot of good data, because as someone mentioned, there are other centers in town, so, just to give you some perspective on that. And then the last piece I wanted to just say, it's in my papers, I don't want to argue the standing thing, but there's really, there's a presumption of standing, but there also has to be some evidence, and it can't be speculative. So if you're going to claim that your property value is going to be affected, you really need some evidence.
Documentation to back that up.
So I don't, again, I don't want to really argue it here, I just wanted to sort of point it out. We did brief it in our letter, so it's there for the board to consider if they'd like. And one more thing, if I can, and then I'll shut up, is the, there's a case on point, exactly on point here, and it holds that if a childcare center meets the dimensional requirements and complies with all the dimensions, that site plan review cannot be used to change the dimensions. You can't require an applicant to be more restrictive. In other words, you want more setback, or you want a smaller building, or you, it just, there's case law on that. So again, we're working in that context as well. So I provided the citations in our, in our brief. They're not, they're not hard to find, so I'm not sure why there was difficulty finding that. But that's all I have to say about it. And I, well, one last thing, because I think it's important to say, and I, is the planning board did a good job here. They did their job. They were thorough, they were professional, they took time, they were thoughtful, and they, they did struggle with parts of this, but in the end, they, they did the right thing. And they got good advice from council, and they got good advice from the planner. So they, they really didn't do anything wrong. They, they did their job, and they were bound by the bylaw, as, you know, as we all are. So if you have any questions, I'll be here, but thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the audience who's to speak tonight on this matter, in favor or against? Seeing none, if we're comfortable, we can close the public hearing if there are other questions.
Before we do, I guess, I'm just putting it in one sentence, we just, we just need some proof that you're being harmed, or some kind of information that you're being harmed, or just something like that.
I, I understand what he said. In the same case that he cited, it is determined that I have standing just off presumption by being in a butter. I don't need to provide evidence unless it's challenged. And given that we did not get a notice until yesterday, and no evidence was provided to challenge my standing, I do not need to have proof on me at this moment. And just to touch on one more thing on Primrose, because of the square footage, this, the footprint on that building is only about 11,500 square feet, which was mentioned in my narrative. Just, it, there has a section of two floors, just.
The lot coverage was 11,000, is that what you're saying?
The footprint of the building.
Yeah.
The total square footage is bigger because it has a second floor on part of the building, but the footprint, which is what my main argument of being unreasonable on 150, is only about 11,500 square feet.
Excellent. Yes, Danny? Absolutely.
So if that building was cut in half into two floors, would the argument still stand?
I don't think so. Assuming that they're not doing, you know, 15-foot ceilings, and the building's going to be 45-feet tall type of thing, I don't think that that's my argument would apply. You know, if you're working with maybe 10-foot ceilings and, you know, four over 12 roof pitch, or even a flat roof, I don't feel as if this building would have its massive footprint and just this outlier, and just, you know, the way it imposes on everybody in the neighborhood, it wouldn't have that bulk and that mass to it. That would be so, you know, just mind-boggling.
I can ask, would that be a consideration?
I do have to state my name and everything, yeah. All right, so Brian Sonsky with Viking Development and the Gardner School. So although we do have some two-story locations that we open in, or that are open and operating, it does cause some hardship on our operations. We serve children ages six weeks to five years old. Children under the age of 30 months old are considered non-ambulatory and aren't allowed to be on an upper floor. So operationally, a two-story school is not preferable for us.
That's really one of the concerns you had mentioned about changing the space without regulation. Right. Thank you. Are you willing to speak, ma'am?
I guess I'll apologize first. I came tonight because this sounded interesting. Nancy Arroway, 65 Littleton Road.
Thank you.
So I'm trying to understand this project or this, this request. It was my understanding that to challenge the decision of the planning board, you have to go to the state. But to challenge the action of the building inspector, you come to the ZBA. Is that correct?
Yes, but I don't think we're, we're challenging the building inspector here.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm having a hard time understanding. Because what I'm hearing is that the applicant in this hearing is stating that the damage is because of the square footage coverage of this project, which is in compliance with the building size, coverage, and setbacks.
I understand.
Of that zone. And I'm not understanding how that is an action of the building inspector to okay the project to go forward.
I think I'll defer to John, if that's all right, Ms. Ackman.
Like I said, I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm just looking for some clarification and understanding.
I think this is the very first one I've ever sat on, so it's, it's new territory for us as well.
Yep, thank you, through you, Mr. Chair. So I mentioned this briefly, I don't know if you were here for that, but site plan review is a, an unusual situation. It's not mentioned in the State Zoning Act, so you're correct that typically a planning board decision would be appealed directly to court. Subdivision decisions go to court, special permit decisions go to court. Site plan review is a creature of bylaw. So if, to determine what the correct appeal route is, you have to look to the bylaw. Chelmsford does not provide for direct appeal to court from site plan approval. So what courts have told us is, where site plan approval is a prerequisite to a building permit, you, you have to wait. If you want to appeal site plan approval, you have to wait until a building permit is issued that's based on site plan approval having been given. So in this case, the planning board approved site plan approval, gave site plan approval. The petitioner wanted to appeal that, but technically he had to wait until a building permit was issued that relied on site plan approval. That happened here, a foundation permit was issued for this project. Therefore, he can appeal that issuance. That's a building inspector decision. As you point out, that comes to this board. So through that, he can then look at the reasons that the building inspector approved the permit, one of which was, site plan approval was granted. He can then ask if that was a proper, compliant with the bylaws. So that's how we get to site plan approval being in front of this board.
So, so the question at hand then is whether or not the, the building coverage size, the square footage, is compliant, or whether it is reasonable to the neighborhood.
Yeah. If you would, yeah.
Yeah, that's, I think that's a question both for the petitioner to tell us, which she has, and for the board to determine. You know, what is his appeal? What do we have to decide here? That's really how the appeal is framed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Question for town council. I don't have the, I'm not sure how familiar you are, and I don't have it in front of me, but I believe in Rogers versus Norfolk, was cost to do something like make it a two-floor building part of something that's not, was cost something that's not considered to be an issue for the boards when making a determination on forcing like a second floor? Or does it fall to the developer in cost being a reason to not do it? I would have to go back and read the case, because I believe it was specifically touched upon in that case, but I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Financial hardship to adjust the plan? Can't consider financial hardship to adjust the plan?
Yeah, that was my question.
I think, please.
I don't know that case.
Mr. Chair, yeah, thank you. So through site plan approval, the board does not have to consider financial hardship in applying conditions of approval. I can also point out that that particular case, Rogers' case, that was a denial of site plan approval. So what the court is looking at there is very different from what you're looking at here.
And just to add something to that, during the planning board proceedings, that notion never came up.
Of a second floor?
Correct.
Yeah.
I mean, the answer the applicant or the owner gave was, to me satisfactory, that, you know, you can't have children or young children on the second floor. That's a safety issue certainly as well, so.
It's not a one-time cost, it's a continual.
It's an operational.
Yeah. You're just no restriction in that manner.
May I?
Yes, please.
Just one, one issue. The issue in the Rogers case was, the town had a regulation, a dimensional regulation, if I recall, that limited childcare centers to 2,500 square feet. And the proponent said, "That's unreasonable. We can't run a school that size." So when a town adopts a right, a specific regulation like that.
It's enforceable.
It's considered valid unless the proponent can show that it's unreasonable. The proponent showed it was unreasonable.
So the denial was reversed.
And so, exactly. The, the court said, you know, the presumption of validity has to go away here because the protected user has shown that it can't, isn't a practical thing. But, but Chelmsford doesn't have that. It's a completely different situation.
Right, the situation could not apply.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Any other questions from the board?
You know, I don't know if it's exactly apples to apples, but in the past year, we had a situation where a proposed project seemed to meet every criteria, except the neighborhood was totally against it. And the board elected to deny the petitioner. It went to the state, and it came back that we were wrong, that the emotions have no bearing on anything. It has to be demonstrated clear and cut harm, which in this, in that case, it was not. It seems to be somewhat similar to this.
I would say, I was there, I think, and I was there at their remediation, and the, the decision was made after quite a bit of bargaining. It wasn't just, you were wrong. It wasn't just, "You were wrong, and that's it, and this changed." We went to remediation, we went through the process, and we came to an amiable agreement that did allow the, the decision to be reversed, but there were substantial changes in how that was handled, so...
And the applicant was in front of us for a per, a special permit, I believe it was.
Correct. That's correct.
The applicant was in front of us requesting a special permit. This is, that has, it's totally a different situation. Like, there's, the applicant was in front of us for a special permit, that we initially...
It wasn't just a reversal of decision.
Yeah.
We renegotiated what we felt was an, a, you know, an amicable agreement to, to make that change.
It was similar in that the reason that we used to go forward, as opposed to allowing the petitioner to go forward, was based on subjective...
You use, you, you use neighborhood and social character.
Yep.
Based upon a butter input.
Which we can, under the bylaws.
Well, whether we could or we couldn't, that was the decision we made. It did, it did go to an appeal, and it was heard, and the remediation occurred. And it was adjusted to a point that it was deemed amiable. But it was definitely, you know, I, I think what we applied, as best we could, was what we felt was accurate, and there was certainly a enormous amount of neighborhood opposition to it. Do the, do the neighbors have any rights that they would not be heard?
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying it was based on many neighbors. That case was based on many neighbors. In this case, we only have one. And, I don't know, I still haven't heard a, a true grievance.
He's just appealing the, the, he's just doing an appeal to the issuance of the permit to get the site plan reviewed. His initial appearance, he had a, he had the, you had the petition, right? The 200 signatures?
I have a petition where I walked the neighborhood, and I got over 100 signatures. I have an additional petition from change.org that has over 1,300 signatures.
Yeah, so there's definitely...
That might have been something you wanted to present tonight, but we're, we're, again, not going to act in that direction
Yeah.
to, to decide it, because it is, you know, what we are reviewing is, did the, in our opinion, did the planning board do the right thing? And we'll make that vote and decide. After that fact, you can still appeal our decision, and then it wouldn't end up in an actual courtroom, where you may get a better legal opinion than we can offer you.
Right.
But that would be the path that you would pursue, should you not prevail.
So I just wanna offer one more piece to everybody. One benefit or advantage that a town has when denying a Dover permit, a Dover use application, is that the applicant, or the developer owns the burden of proof, to prove that your decision was unreasonable. If I appeal it, I don't have that same advantage, to the same degree that the town has if they were to deny or restrict this type of use. Just, so there, there is an advantage just in the development process for the town to be the one that...
I, I can't disagree with you. I, I think, I'd have to have a little more information to, to understand, but I, I know what you're saying. And again, if, you know, you, you need to take this to another level, you, you are able to.
Yep.
Our, our decision is pretty clear here. What we need to decide is, did the planning board follow their regulations when they presented to the building inspector? And did he follow his operations when he issued the permit? That is our only decision here. We wouldn't, we're any further back than that, is just to decide whether Mr. Negron, in fact, followed his regulations when he approved the building permit and wrote it.
And their use of it as a daycare or educational facility is not under, they're not claiming that right of use under the Dover, 'cause that's right of use under our bylaws.
That was something I didn't know till today.
Yeah, so the Dover protection, that they're claiming, if I'm not mistaken, right? The Dover protection is our...
Duplicitous.
The planning board's limitations on what they can do when it comes to the construction plans, like the construction of the site.
I don't think that came up in the planning board meetings either, just...
That's my understanding.
The only one, uh, problem I have is, like, I still don't actually see actual standing. There's presumptive standing, which gets him here, but I don't actually see standing for us to be able to, at least in my opinion, to be able to make a decision on this. Unless the applicant can provide us with some actual proof of standing, I don't think we even have enough to be able to make a decision.
I, I would understand what you're saying, but wouldn't that make our decision? We would decide that without standing, that indeed the building inspector did follow protocol. I mean, all we're really deciding is, was the building permit... Am I correct about this? We're deciding that the building commissioner issued the permit legally.
I think, but I, I, what I meant was, like, I think we should give the petitioner a chance to at least try to provide us with
Right.
proof that he has standing, like some sort of...
Like if there was a study done for, in his house, was devalued based on this property going up.
Cause then at that point...
If that applies, which it sounds like it may, I don't...
Shall I defer to you, if you think there's reason for us to continue, I guess, is the request.
No, thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, my advice on standing in situations like this, where the, where the petitioner's in a butter, is that, and there is no evidence brought forward. There's an allegation that he doesn't have standing, but there's no evidence brought forward that he does not, that he's not injured. He's correct, the burden is not on him at that point. My advice to the board would be, I would not rest your decision on standing. I would go to the merits of the decision. And if standing is still an issue, it can be raised at court.
So you would, you would be comfortable with us voting on whether, whether there's standing, whether Commissioner Negron had the, the right to issue the permit?
Right, assume standing and go to the merits.
Okay. Other questions?
I, I understand the confusion there, but, you know, mass law, case law, it all supports that just being in a butter gives me presumptive standing. And that shouldn't be a question.
I think that's what he's saying, that we assume that you have standing, and then move forward with that assumption.
Right.
Other questions?
I mean, I guess, do we have questions for the people in the audience, or should we close the public hearing?
Or the applicant, once it's closed, that'll be the end of, our discussions will be at the table. I think even of John as well, right, we wouldn't, after we close?
After, after you close, you can continue to discuss mine yourselves.
We would not be asking you questions.
You could.
Oh, you could, okay, okay. It's time for a motion?
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, by Rod, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing unanimous. So I think we, we need to focus a little on, on what our job is here, and that is to decide if Jose made the correct decision issuing the building permit based on the information he got from the planning board. All of the other things are not really in our purview or on our plate.
So what are the criteria that we can use to evaluate whether or not he did that correctly?
I don't think there's any evidence that he didn't. The setbacks were all correct
Yep.
dimensionally. We've proved that the RB District supports childcare. It's on legal-owned land. The parking is the only thing you could hang your hat on, and it sounds like the planning board did a good job deciding what the number should be, and what the number was, and issued, I guess, a waiver of sorts. I'm not quite sure how that worked, but...
Everything they're doing is by right, except for the parking, and the parking was not an issue for the planning board.
To deny.
Yes. And that is all the information that would go to Jose for him to make that decision, because everything dimensionally that he looks at
Was correct.
is correct.
So there's really no misstep in Jose's actions, and by default, in the planning board's actions, that we can discern, there's no evidence to the contrary.
Yeah, it's kinda where my mind has been for, like, half an hour, as I, lots of, I'm like, what is, what is the core of this argument?
Where's the point, yeah, yeah.
There's a lot of things going around it, but I wanna know what I'm being asked to decide, and it's like, well...
I think that is our decision. Someone like to make a motion to the affirmative?
I make a motion to approve...
I think it's deny.
The, I make an motion to approve the administrative appeal for 150 North Road.
No.
No, it's deny.
You always make your, you always make your motion in the affirmative.
She is right about that. So the vote, if you are in favor of
Approving it.
approving it, would be to deny
The appeal. The motion.
So, is that phrase correct?
That's fine, right, you'd need a second, I think, still.
Yes.
Before we vote, I wanna make sure that I'm, because there was a bunch of, like, it feels like double negatives going on, so...
Yes.
I make your motion to approve it. Do you agree with me?
Right, so whatever she said, if we wanna overturn what the planning board did, we deny. If we want to, no.
No.
If you wanna overturn it, no, if you wanna overturn the planning board, you approve the appeal.
Okay.
If you don't wanna overturn the planning board,
You deny the appeal.
you disagree, you vote against the motion.
Okay.
So, again, I make a motion to approve the administrative appeal for 150 North Road.
I second.
All in favor of granting the appeal? All in opposition to...
Wait, wait.
Opposition to the appeal.
Opposition of the appeal.
It's unanimous. Appeal is denied.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You know, he's earnest, it's just tough, it's a tough spot.
Really tough.
Very. I do think it has, I think it has revealed some, maybe some deficiencies in our own bylaws.
I'll be happy to...
So now we'll move on to continuing.
Okay.
No, thank you.
But he got the question.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My pleasure.
I hope that was suitable for, for the, it's new to us, for sure.
No, well, that's why I'm here, I think.
I told him that I, we were to continue.
Okay, that's right, I'm sorry.
The guy had a lot of guts to come.
Oh, good, no.
I mean, it's hard.
He was a good lawyer.
He knew his stuff.
Yep.
It's hard.
Is he a lawyer?
I'll take my leave.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your time.
He did his homework.
The way he was talking about building, I figured he had some sort of experience with building. He was talking about floor heights and pitch root, I was like, okay, you know something about architecture.
I'm just playing with us careful. Looking for a continuation on Morose Avenue, Cobblestone Five LLC, till January 2nd.
I make a motion to continue Cobblestone Avenue until January 2nd?
Morose Avenue, Cobblestone Five LLC.
Yes, I'm sorry, Morose Avenue, Cobblestone Five.
Peter? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Has there been any testimony on that yet?
I think you missed one, I think you missed two.
No, she's missed, she's missed.
Stephen has missed two, two of the hearings, so he's no longer qualified to vote. Jamie missed one, but just submitted.
She can watch them all. Okay.
So as of now, it would be Brian, Charlie, Peter. One, two, three, four.
Yeah.
And Jamie.
And Rod, yeah, do I count that right?
That's six.
One, two, three, four, five, it's five.
Did Glenn, did this Glenn?
You're here for everything.
Yes.
Yep.
Good. Isn't that six people?
We need five.
Okay, but there's six still eligible, is what I'm saying, yeah. Is Danny eligible?
Uh, yes, Danny's eligible too.
Also, we've got a potential seven.
Yes.
Okay. Good luck, guys.
Hand up that camera. You did this on purpose.
Strategic.
I'm looking for a motion for a continuance on Ledge Road, owner Ledge Road Realty Holdings and Newport Aggregates LLC, till January 2nd.
I make a motion to continue Ledge Road, owners Ledge Road Realty Holdings and Newport Aggregate LLC, till January.
I'll second that, but I ask if they're actually gonna show up this time.
Within their rights, I, I can certainly agree with you. Can we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
And there's been no testimony on that one, so everyone is still eligible.
Still qualified.
Yeah, you're stuck, Steve, for now. For now.
What about, what about the meeting dates?
Uh, next meeting date's January 2nd and February 6th. And I will have minutes posted for the next meeting.
Okay, so yes, if a motion to adjourn is made, we can leave.
Can I make a, I make a motion to adjourn?
No, I just had, I'll ask the question after.
All in favor? Unanimous, a quick unanimous.
It's the shortest meeting record.